Ladies and gentlemen, it is six o'clock. This is the regular city council meeting in the city of Rockport for April twenty-second. It is four o'clock and time to start. I will start with calling the road to establish presence of quorum. Ward one.
Here.
Ward three.
Here.
Ward four.
Here.
Mayor here. We do have a quorum. Would you join us for pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Brad Dret?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands firmament, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a seat. First item on the agenda is citizens to be heard. I do have one card from Mr. David Watson. Mr. Watson, if you come up here and give us your name and address, you got three minutes when you start, sir.
My name is David Watson. I live at forty-two West Wildwood in Rockport, which is in the coastal Wildwood subdivision on the extreme south side of Rockport. I've been there for thirteen years. That subdivision was founded in two thousand and six. Currently, our city council member for Ward one, Stephanie Wrangle. Currently, the subdivision, it was established with sixty-two lots. All of them are now sold as of January of this year. They average one point two to four acres with one exceptional lot that's eleven and a half acres. We have fifty-two owners of those sixty-two lots. There's forty homes. One is nearing completion, and another one's been approved and construction should start before too long. Some of the original lots, and I brought handouts. I don't know if you got a copy of the handout of the maps. But some of the original lots were subdivided into smaller lots, which increased the opportunity for additional homes and tax base. Good thing there. We were annexed in two thousand and ten with taxes beginning year of two thousand and eleven, and my handout included a spreadsheet that I've maintained for years as every lot, every year, city taxes paid. The total taxes paid during those fourteen years, four hundred and sixty-five thousand six hundred and fifty dollars roughly. All of this information in that spreadsheet is off your Aransas County appraisal district website. It's all public information. Our total taxes in two thousand and twenty-four is about eighty-four thousand. There's also a graph in that handout that shows the constant climb in our total tax base there. In two thousand and sixteen, I met with our city council member for Ward one, Rusty Day. I was curious about what the opportunity was for the city to take ownership of our roads. And at the end of that conversation, basically, the answer was, when hell freezes over. So that was the end of that discussion about the city ever taking over the ownership of the roads. We also talked about annexation requirements of providing city streets, water, sewer, gas, police services, et cetera. And there was also a variance to that annexation that allowed cities to only provide services that are provided in like areas of the city. So I'm not arguing anything about city services. We're all happy where we are. I just wanted to point this information out. Our subdivision receives basically no city services except for police, and the Rockport police are fantastic.
Mr. Watson, your time is technically up. You had three minutes to start. How much more you got?
I'll cut it real short.
Okay.
If I may.
Go right ahead.
Bottom line to me being here is we had a major event two weeks ago. Everybody's aware of it with the fire, the Aransas Woods Fire, which started adjacent to a lot at the back of our subdivision. And for the next two days, a lot of us manned garden hoses at one home in particular that abutted brush closely. We encountered a lot of different volunteer fire department personnel. Thank you all. And the fire never really threatened that home, but we all know what happened subsequently. Reason I'm here is to ask that if there's any way that the city can allocate one year of our property taxes for the subdivision and donate it to all the volunteer fire departments. And I know the state constitution forbids some of that, but it also allows it if it's for public interest. And I think the volunteer fire departments, it's a public interest, and we all saw how valuable that was two weeks ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson.
Mayor.
Yeah.
Mr. Watson, on the agenda tonight, we do have an item to discuss, funding for the fire departments, how we currently fund it and future funding. If you want to stick around and listen to that.
Okay.
Discussion or online or whatever, but it'll be on tonight. There is an item on the agenda to discuss that tonight.
Okay, great.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is proclamation declaring April twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-five is George Rikers' Day in Rockport, Texas. Whereas George Rikers, beloved member of the Rockport community, passed away on March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five, at the age of eighty-one. And whereas George was born on June nineteenth, nineteen forty-three, in Brooklyn, New York, to George and Evelyn Rikers, Jr., and grew up in Springfield Gardens, Queens, New York, where he attended PS thirty-seven, Junior High Fifty-nine, and Andrew Jackson High School. And whereas George's early life was filled dedication to service and community involvement as a Boy Scout, a member of the youth choir at First Presbyterian Church, past master counselor for Demolay, and playing the drums in both his church and VFW marching bands. And whereas in nineteen seventy-nine, George and his life partner Jim Godfrey visited Rockport, Texas, and fell in love with the town. They returned to Georgia, sold their home, and moved to Rockport in March of nineteen eighty, where they opened the Treasure Chest Furniture Refinishing Shop. And whereas George quickly became an active member of the Rockport community, volunteering with the Rockport Seafair, the Art Festival, and helping form South Rockport Neighbors in nineteen ninety-five, along with founding the Rockport Christmas Parade. And whereas George received the prestigious Corpus Christi Collar Times Jefferson Award for his outstanding volunteerism and unwavering dedication to Rockport, which included his contributions to many charitable organizations as well, choosing to give away the hundreds of dollars in gift cards during Hurricane Harvey. Now therefore be resolved that ITM Jero, Mayor of the City of Rockport, Texas, proudly proclaimed April twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-five, as George Rikers' Day in recognition and honor of his exceptional contributions to the Rockport community and his enduring legacy in kindness, generosity, and service. His memory will live on in the hearts of all who were touched by his spirit and dedication. And whereof I have herein to set my hand and the official seal of the City of Rockport on this twenty-second day of April, two thousand and twenty-five. If those of you from South Rockport neighbors would like to get a picture over here under this thing, I will present it to some of you. We appreciate you.
Can we jump one more with the board member?
Joe fills it in then.
The following items may be acted upon in a single motion, no separate discussion or action. Any of these items will be held unless pulled at the request of a member of the city council. Does anyone wish to remove any of those?
I make a motion to remove consent agenda number eight.
Okay. Number eight will not be voted on this time, but we are going to do it separately. They asked that there be some changes made.
We're gonna pull it and then table it till the next meeting.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. We're gonna put it. We don't need a motion. We're gonna do it anyway, but thank you.
Okay.
Any other?
Move to approve the consent agenda with the changes to be made? Is that sufficient?
That's fine.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further question? If not, we'll call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Thank you. All right. Item number twelve. Consider approval of Texas Maritime Wine Fest's second quarter financial report for the hotel. I'm sorry, it was in that group. I've been reading ahead of myself. Are there people here to talk about the public hearing and so forth on the property out on, wow, what's that, seventeen oh one Sixteenth Street? There are two public hearings scheduled. They were posted for six-thirty, and so we cannot deal with them until six-thirty. So we will be back at six-thirty, but we will take care of the rest of the meeting before then. Next item that we can deal with at this point, item number fifteen. Consider a presentation of the Texas Department of Agriculture Form A ten twenty-four, Community Development Block Grant, Section Three, Goals and Concepts, as related to CDBG Program and Grant Contract, CDV twenty-three dash zero three six six, Holly Road and Kluge Trail Street Improvement Project. Ms. Henry.
Hi. I don't know if y'all can hear me. This is Cat White with Grant Works. Okay, great. I just have this on here to read off a required presentation for the city's TDA grant. No action needs to be taken. It's just required that this be presented in a public meeting. So it's a little dry with like some other grant requirements, but I'll try to read through it quickly. And then, of course, if there's any questions at all, please let me know. All right. So this is the Section Three presentation to the city. As y'all know, the city recently received the following grant award, Grant Contract, CDV twenty-three zero three six six, for an award amount of five hundred thousand dollars for street improvements. The grant is funded by the Community Development Block Grant Program through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and the Texas Department of Agriculture. So as a condition of this funding, the city must comply with Section Three of the Housing and Urban Development Act of nineteen sixty-eight. And so that means that to the greatest extent feasible, grant recipients must direct economic opportunities generated by CDBG funds to low and very low income persons. So in part, this means that ensuring that Section Three businesses have information to submit a bid or proposal on a project, and that Section Three workers have information about any available job opportunities related to the project. There's also additional definitions and details under TX CDBG Policy Issuance twenty-dash-oh-one. So for the company level, a company may qualify as a Section Three business if it's owned by a low-income person, if it's owned by a Section Eight assisted housing resident, or if seventy-five percent of all labor hours for the business in a three-month period are performed by Section Three workers. There's also on the HUD website, there's a specific page for Section Three where a firm can be registered as a Section Three business. And so this project specifically is expected to include the following contracting opportunities. So grant administration services have already been selected. Engineering services have been selected, as well as prime contractor, but some contractors are still being determined if any come up in the project. So an individual may qualify as a Section Three worker if their annual income is below the county threshold for an individual's family size. Based on that number, specifically, the actual threshold changes. And then you can also qualify if you're a current or recent youth build participant. You can register your information and search for opportunities at workintexas.gov. All right. There's also a map that is created for the project area. So Section Three workers that reside near the project location kind of qualifies as a targeted Section Three worker, which is just a different category of qualification. And there's just a map that can be provided showing that service area. So the city is required to track all hours worked on the project based on these three categories of workers. So all workers, and then Section Three, and then targeted Section Three workers specifically. That's probably what Grant Works does. Our Labor Department helps collect that information, which includes requiring collecting certain income information. All right. And then if you want any more information, again, the TX CDBG Policy Issuance twenty-dash-oh-one or twenty CFR Part Seventy-five has the federal code of regulations information in it. And that is all I needed to go over. Please let me know if y'all have any questions, but otherwise, thank you so much for your time.
That's all right. Appreciate that. Any questions, council? Have any questions or anything? Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Next item, consider discussion of the Rockport Fire Volunteer Fire Department Collections, Needs, and Future Funding from Councilman Brad Brad Dret.
Mayor, I was contacted by one of the chiefs to discuss the way we fund the fire department and their future needs. Obviously, everything is getting more expensive in life, and that doesn't, the fire departments are excluded from that. So he just wanted to have a discussion with us on ways that we can future, fund the departments in the future. And then we kind of discussed in our budget meeting how we currently fund them right now with through the water bill, and if we could go over that a little bit.
Sure. So the last two years, sequential years, we've raised the amount that we donated to them. I think we went from three to four to five. I could be wrong on those numbers.
I think we're at three, at three dollars. We mentioned right now.
We're at three? Okay. So shot that a little high.
I think it went from a dollar twenty-five.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. That's right.
Yeah.
So we've seen a decrease in the donations. This is the first year of using us. So I would think that we could safely deduct that the pain point is three dollars, and we may need to go back down to two fifty or two seventy-five or something in that range. So that's the first thing I think we should consider. And then Rob and Brad have a really good point that right now it's an opt-in program. If we switch it to an opt-out, it might be a little more effective in collecting money. And then an additional item that we want to pursue that will also help that is not allowing holes on short-term accounts, no more short-term accounts. So there's three avenues to pursue, changing the way we do business to potentially affect the donations. I would suggest we try all three because none of them are necessarily harmful. They're just gonna take a little bit of work, and then we can measure again in three, six, nine months and see if we're having any increase. I don't know that we're ever going to fund a fire department, you know, with our utility bill increases. So we also should consider, do we want to make a monetary donation? Do we want to figure a donation into our tax rate as we figure it? Everything's getting more expensive. Probably stop giving me Demolay. It's something to be considered. And then I think some PR would be really good because the mayor, I got this from the mayor, that five dollars a month is the best five dollars you spend. I bet that guy standing right there would tell you that that's the best five dollars a month he spends every year. And we need to do some really serious PR on that. And then maybe we want to sponsor a booth that they're fundraisers, so we're contributing to that and also getting our information on it. I think that's something that Shelley has been on a roll with, making sure that we have a presence and contributing to their events as a city is just another avenue. It's a little bit of money, but it's something.
As a taxpaying citizen, I, people should realize the savings that they get from having the services that we have right now, that we're not having to pay adware and taxes to fund the fire department.
You have no idea.
Because that's not something that really gives back. You know, they don't collect fines or fees really, and so it's just a cost to the, cost of doing business, but it's a very expensive cost. And so whatever I think, I like the idea of it being an opt-out versus an opt-in. I think maybe that'd be one way to easily, maybe, maybe get those collections.
The opt-out will be only for new services.
New services. We wouldn't retroactively apply it to everybody. That would probably be a little bit deceptive, but.
So with that being stated, do you think that we'll see less of the decrease this year by going down to two fifty? Do you think they're still gonna have the?
With the reduction of what we have, people already manually opting out with being the opt-in, I guess, you know what I mean?
Right.
Do you expect us to have an increase by going down to two fifty and doing an opt-out with the new services that are expected?
I would probably, my gut is that because of the pain point of the three dollars per meter, it'd be probably leaving that as it is, but just exercise, have it be an opt-out program and monitor it.
I would. That's fair. I would just hate to reduce it.
Sure.
That kind of goes against, you know what I mean? The whole point of why we pushed to slowly increase it, like the opt-out. And then anything additional? I know we've discussed taxes before, and a lot of people are unaware of why we can't apply tax directly to the fire department and the restriction there. So again, with PR, we've talked about putting that out. They can take one-time donations too, correct? Or no?
The donations on the bills, they can take them at the counter, but changing the bills is gonna be problematic if we try to like, you know, add a dollar for, add three dollars or add five dollars. It is problematic from a billing standpoint.
Would it be inappropriate if the public noticed that on that if they wanted to come to contribute? How they could do so, especially with the recent circumstances?
I don't think it's appropriate at all, and I think billing and collections would be after collecting that money. It's not gonna be a part of their bill. It's gonna be a separate collection, but they can definitely collect a monetary donation above and beyond what the utility bills. Absolutely.
Well, my question is, if it's a separate, you know, they go to the counter, you're taking that donation at the counter, is it a separate account? Why is it easier to be that if you're paying, say, QR code on the bill, they can go into that account that they're taking at the counter? Why can't it just be like set up as one?
Because it's not tied to an account, because with the billing, it's looking for a certain dollar amount, and if you start, if they start paying a different dollar amount, then it's starting to want to credit people's accounts. It gets real.
Can you have like a separate, like, they? Could we do just like they send out notices for, you know, call this number before you dig? Can we put a QR code out there and mail it out to the residents for donations for the fire department? Like, that's, I feel like that would be, if people just on their phone, here, do it, go into the account.
Where do we pay them out of now? When do we give them their checks? Do we have a separate account for them?
No, it's not a separate.
It just comes out of?
It comes, we track how much in collections that we receive, and then.
And then you write the check out of collections.
Yes.
Yes. The answer is yes, but I don't know how about that. Let me figure it out.
Because I think there's like, it's something.
We'll figure it out.
It's like there's two different senses here. Like, knowledge is power. Like, if people, like, they're looking at your bill, and like, five dollars, I'm not paying five dollars for it. I'm not gonna pay five dollars if I don't know what it's for. If we're putting the PR out there saying, okay, well, this is why, this is what it's going for, people who are willing to do it, so with the one-time donation at the same time, we have to have a way to like make it easier and accessible for people to be able to.
Hundred percent. Let us figure it out.
Even if it's just, I mean, Facebook, people would share, especially with recent circumstances, I think, just getting that information out, getting them to understand what volunteer fire department is, are the restrictions, and how to contribute.
So I think something that would be important is, we all know how much a fire department costs, or we don't all know, but we know it's very costly. If we absorb them into the city, we would have to double your property taxes. One, because then we have to provide insurance for that equipment, for those people, for their actions, and that alone is worth every dime we can get to them. It would be almost untenable for us to bring them on the city.
Definitely be more than five dollars.
Be a lot, be a lot more than five dollars.
It's three.
Three dollars on your one.
We will figure out the code. We will figure out on the cam. Like I said, the answer is yes. You just have to give us a minute, okay?
Let's not predict the fees. Let's do those two and let's work out, see how it goes from there.
We're gonna do PR. We're gonna leave it at three. We're gonna make it an opt-out, and we're gonna look at how we can do a QR code for a one-time donation. Robbie's over there. He's gonna throw something at me in a minute.
I still like how often we do have this brought to us, though, like when Robbie gives us this information on increase, decrease, because it is something we are gonna have to continue to address, and if we need to increase it again, you know, I'm completely fine with having that conversation. Just want us to go up, not down.
And it's one of those things that no way you probably looked at or considers until we have, you have an event like we had a couple weeks ago, and now everybody, it's on people's minds again, and.
Often the best time for us to have these conversations.
This is gonna be the best time to push it out.
And get that information out there because there's more out to receive the message as well. So Vanessa, like, the event, like, if you're gonna push this out, this is gonna be the time, not like three months from now. We need to push this stuff out now because people have.
Robbie would want it happening.
Because. Tomorrow. We need to push out just the knowledge part, the PR part, now, because we have the event with the fire. It's already.
It's Friday. Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. I know we have two years, but I had trouble with both of you.
Yeah.
So yes, ma'am, next week, Monday.
That's right.
And he can do whatever he says he's gonna do by tomorrow. But Shelley has a really good idea. We'll put the QR code straight to the fire account. So you're donating to the five-one-three-C and getting your tax, whatever, and we'll just put it on all of our, all of our media.
Right, did they, I know you said the way that they fund, you know, get funded, but what was the fund used for? I mean, did they go through their needs at once? Because you said once, and how? Have they identified what they're needing?
Their.
I mean, I understand we had a fire and.
Yeah, it's, I think it's all their capital costs, their fuel, their trucks, their repairs, just everything in general.
We lend music for whatever they seek it, as long as it's capital.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I mean, that would be good to know. I mean, that's a flashy thing for the fire department to put out there, to know what that money's going for.
I think.
And I think they're doing, they're doing a decent job of putting it back out, putting some PR out there to, and they are accepting donations, you know, themselves. One of the things I have a little concern about with is future funding for, say, Lamar, because they get it from their gas bill. So what we do in the future there, you know, the checks that we issue at the end of the year.
You may get a bigger donation if the ladder truck's broken, you know, you're the biggest hotel in town, you might wanna, you know, invest in that ladder truck.
Consider, yeah.
You know what I mean? So some of those details will help, you know, you don't have to get down in the weeds, but.
And I think just after this last event, just some of the equipment that went down and, you know, they did, I think, order two new, two new engines, Rockport did, and that's, you know, a billion and a half dollars, I believe, is what they spent. So, and that was.
I mean, did they go through their needs at once? Because you said once and how? Have they identified of what they're needing?
Their
I mean, I understand we had a fire and
Yeah, no, it's, I think it's all their capital costs, their 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 fuel, their trucks, their repairs, just everything in general.
We lend music for whatever they seek it, as long as it's capital.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I mean, that would be good to know, I mean, that's a flashy thing for the fire department to put out there, to know what that money's going for.
And I I think they're doing, they're doing a decent job of putting it back out, putting some PR out there to to, and they are accepting donations, you know, themselves. One of the things I I have a little concern about with is is future funding for, say, Lamar, uh because they they get it from their gas bill. Um so what we do in the future there, um you know, the the checks that we we issue at the end of the year.
You may get a bigger donation if the ladder truck's broken, you know, you're the biggest hotel in town, you might wanna, you know, invest in that ladder truck. You know what I mean? So some of those details will help, you know, you don't have to get down in the weeds, but
And I I think just after this this last event, just some of the equipment that went down and and, you know, they did, they did, I think, order two new, two new engines, Rockport did. And that's, you know, a billion and a half dollars, I believe, is what they spent. So uh and that was a change from what they originally, I think, were expecting, and those the engines they were looking at originally were around nine hundred or a million each. So um just as with everything, it's just got more expensive. And the service we get provided is pretty good for three dollars a month versus if they have it.
And Ryan brings up a good point.
What people don't understand, and I am approached frequently by people who want to know, why don't we just have our own fire department? Personnel costs, just for hiring people, would be comparable to the police department. Equipment costs is a different matter, because you can't buy a fire truck for what you pay for a patrol car. And the equipment costs themselves would increase it by more than what probably what the personnel costs are, which is, city manager said, we would have to double the tax rate to pay for it. And people do not understand that, and I can't, I can't understand why, but I I came from a place where we had to pay fire department. And they they went out and and did all the work and made the police department, fire department civil service in Tyler years and years ago. Um because the firemen could do that. One, they had a little bit of time too, because there wasn't a fire every day, but but they still, they did the work and they were appreciated by the public there. But having always had a volunteer fire department, most folks don't realize, when they move here, don't realize that the fire department that comes out there, they see them as the same folks in Houston or San Antonio or wherever they used to live, and they do not understand that they are getting by paying for most of their own stuff and getting what they can from the cities and other sources. And they can't keep doing it at the cost of too high. So we're gonna have to find a way to do something for them.
The the donations piece like directly to the five oh one C three is a is a really good idea, kind of just coming up with what Ryan was talking about, because those funds would not be restricted in any way. The funds that that we provide is, as Vanessa said, they're supposed to be used for capital purposes only. And so that was, that would really be a better use of funds, talking about restricted and unrestricted funds we did uh on uh Monday. It kind of follows those same guidelines. They could use it for whatever they wanted.
If we were to, and and a future strategic plan for budgets, if we were to entertain a, some sort of tax, uh, you know, to honor ad warrants, could that is it, is there a way to give that to the to the to the departments, because they're
No, well, okay, hold on, I I could be wrong. I think we could do a one-time donation out of ad warrant taxes. I don't think we can, we'd have to go to the voters to increase our tax rate to do a tax over a three point five percent.
Over the three and a half percent.
So there would no, there would be no way to do that, but you could budget a donation, a line item, you know, ten thousand dollars.
You could do the donation to to Rockport, to Lamar, yeah, I mean, is is there, wouldn't there be a restriction?
Ah, we gotta do that.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Uh, that that would be, you know, I I say it's a great idea, but could Portman get money from the city of Rockport? Or can Lamar be able to get it from the city of Rockport?
It would have to cut into our our operations budgets.
Yeah, definitely.
We messing with Lamar not being in our service area here shortly. We won't have any utilities or, you know, out there.
Anything else? We'll be doing budget things here shortly, we have been already. Anything else on the subject? If not, next thing on the agenda is city manager's monthly report.
So the first thing I um I want to talk about is we've done a couple of meetings at four o'clock. A couple of you have expressed that you like this time. We made a snap judgment this time and didn't necessarily get everything thought through. So if we want to move formally to four o'clock, if you guys want to do that, I want you to just give me a nod and we will make make it a move and we will work our public hearings around that. Your next meeting is going to have to be at six thirty because we have some publications out already. So if you want to move to four o'clock, which is great, it's good for us, staff's not hanging out, we're not having to comp time over time, things like that. I think it's a cost saving. I think you're still gonna get your um citizens here. They make time to go to the nine o'clock meetings around town, so I think they'll definitely be able to come to the four o'clock. So if you want to do that, we've got an ordinance that we've got to repeal. And I think we will just make it a resolution from now on, so we're not repealing every time somebody wants to change it.
We're gonna have rules of procedure.
N- no, we're gonna go ahead and do that right away. Are are you gonna have rules of procedure for next meeting?
We have a discussion with Mary.
Okay. We'll have something at the next meeting to move it to four o'clock, but your next meeting will still be at six thirty, if that's the interest. And I'm seeing that that's the interest, okay. Is this mine? Okay. We asked about the impact fee study the other day. I think she mentioned, Carrie mentioned that that's gonna be presented to the P and Z on May fifth. It'll come to you after P and Z approves it. Friesen Nichols has given us a finishing timeline of August. I've asked Carrie to have them condense that as much as possible. I don't know if they'll take my my word into consideration or not, but um we really want to get that done. It's been a year-long process. But they told us it would take a year, so, what'd you say, three? Bells is scheduled for their TCO. Courthouse and City Hall are waiting on their elevators to be operational. I'm sorry? Okay, so that will um allow both of those buildings to receive a TCO as well. On the City Hall project, we have right now a substantial completion of May first. There are a couple of steps that I'm concerned will not happen by May first, that is nine days away. But um we've been assured that it will happen and I'm incredibly hopeful. Is there any questions on City Hall while I'm here on that? Nothing? Wow, okay. So furniture is coming, May first. Let's see, building and development, let's talk about on Public Works, I don't know if any of you have driven down Broadway, but those guys have done a hell of a job fixing up Broadway and the shoreline erosion into Little Bay. If you haven't been out there, give it a drive, you can't miss what Public Works has done, and we're very grateful. Huh? At twenty-five miles an hour, please do not exceed that. But I need you to look at the lovely shoreline protection because those guys have really done a good job. And and the businesses and the homeowners along there are really grateful, so thank y'all very much. Oh, let's see. Water sewer, water purchases going down, water revenue is going down. It's good if we're conserving, it's bad if we're selling, but hey, we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. So I'm gonna just keep going on water, if that's all right, unless anybody has some questions. Let's see, water conservation, we're still still in stage three. There is potential to go to stage four. Currently, we're seventeen percent below our general fund expenditures budget, that's fantastic. Everybody's doing um a good job watching their budgets. I anticipate it to be fully spent by the end of the year and appropriately spent. Sales tax revenue, up two percent year over year. It it's not amazing news, it's not horrible news, we're we're, they're holding their own, how about that? Okay. Robbie, I was gonna ask you about this before we came in here, what's this telling us?
Actually showing who your largest sales taxpayers are, Walmart paying, being over ten percent just in and of themselves of the sales taxes collected.
Okay, so there you go, you can see who our major tax taxpayers are. City of Rockport's right up there at the top. Okay.
The liquor store was down down towards the middle.
I saw that and I was, that's why I was um, you know, I I expected, well, you can get You can get your wine at Walmart, so that probably has some. Walmart H U V, okay, unspent bonds, we've been talking about those since I walked in the door. Waste water treatment plant's still in progress, you can drive by and see what's going on. It's looking great, they're doing great, they told us from the beginning it's a two-year project. We're about a year in now, huh? So we're almost halfway done with that. Great improvement's gonna gonna come with that. And then we've got two other projects scheduled for August. There might still be a hair of money left over there, we will find something appropriate to spend it on if there is. And hopefully we can wrap those up. Police Department, they haven't been busy, they've just been, you know. Three, three officers went to the Police Chiefs Association in Galveston. What did you recently just go to as well, chief?
I'm sorry?
What did you recently just go to?
Yes, sir. Last week was just the technical conference, um there was over eight hundred attendees. There was fifty-five agencies who recognized us being one of them, who being accredited, um out of twenty-eight hundred agencies in the state of Texas, so that's pretty good accomplishment. We, of course, we had the presentation here in the last council meeting. This was just our recognition in front of the other chiefs.
Okay. I cannot stress stretch this out to six thirty, y'all. I would like you to take a look at the public safety communications stats that Lee provided, this was through the fires. This is the uh, was a forty-eight hour period for them. I wish there were totals on there because I don't do math in public, but um you can see how many calls for different services they took. We talked about quickly, sorry to put you on the spot, how many agencies responded and some of the things like that, I know it was a a pretty impressive show. Was forty-two. The majority of that, of course, were mutually in fire departments, but that also included law enforcement, EMS, the state agencies, comms was included in that, any agency, police department, sheriff's office, anyone, but forty-two agencies responded. Forty-two, y'all. Forty-two agencies. And then, of course, there there's a personnel breakdown as well, two hundred and fifty-seven personnel. And then apparatuses, apparatus, one hundred and thirty-two apparatus, and that included every fire apparatus, every police unit, state, again, EMS, et cetera. I guess our farthest, yeah? Our farthest would have been plane from Abilene? I'm sorry? Our farthest would have been a plane from Abilene? Yes. So, um, how long did it take? Two tankers, well, one tanker from Abilene and one from the Austin area, chief.
I think it came from Abilene, dumped, flew to Austin, refilled, came back.
Came back, okay, yes, sir. Okay. And then the following day is when we had the helicopters that were able to refuel.
Two Blackhawks out there, um picking up water from the bay and dumping it.
I wouldn't say Abilene was the furthest, because there were trucks from Montana. Really confused me as well, uh was that when I was out there?
Explain.
They were a task force assigned to Forest Service.
Okay, and they were in the area.
They were, they were already, they're contracted uh through the Forest Service. And uh I was really confused when I was giving them some ice chest and uh saw them in Montana. That's pretty good response time, guys, but and they talk funny, but
Figures. It was my, my point being, it was a very impressive show of force. I know it was tragic, and it's the worst thing that has probably ever happened to the people that were caught up in it. But I also think that we have to be grateful for that huge response that allowed that to be contained more quickly and not be any worse than it was. Again, not to minimize anybody's loss.
I'll add to that, that Councilman Brundrett showed up out there and he took a leadership role and was really doing a great job from what I saw, where we're doing is blocking roads and adding the whiteboard out there. You do this, you do that, get busy, it was great to see.
I, yeah, I heard Brad and his whiteboard are better than Carl Rove on Fox with his whiteboard. But um, you know, whatever. We were thankful for your leadership.
Thank you.
Came at a time we needed. Sometimes a retired firefighter comes in and Andy.
Those guys did an amazing job out there.
Yep, so, so I don't want that to go unnoticed. It all starts with comms. Lee, what are they, the first first responder?
First first responder.
So let's not overlook them. I know you guys in uniform always get all the, but sorry, sorry, guys. Okay, um I'll I'll move on. Parks and Rec, they're doing great stuff, look around, they are, they have something going on all the time. They're doing stuff for the kids, they're doing stuff for the visitors. I couldn't be prouder of what they're trying to achieve over there. The next up is revenue generators. They're working on it. Shelley over here is forcing all of us to be better communicators with our citizens. Here's uh just a list of opportunities that um she has come up with. We are meeting people where they are, Councilmember Brundrett had ice cream, ice cream with the citizens, I wasn't able to make it, I was um
E O C.
Locked into E O C. But we're gonna have tea time at the pool for um Mayor Pro Tim Hatman. So we're gonna have tea and cookies at the pool. We're doing something for you with like lemonade or whatever, but um we're we're gonna be sure that we are communicating and meeting our citizens where they are. We did coffee with the city manager, it was a flop, it was me and the mayor, nobody came by at seven thirty in the morning, that's okay. So so Shelley's being very creative in getting us all out there and forcing everybody to be better at putting out what they do so that our citizens can, one, understand, and, two, we can meet their needs. Any questions on that? Yours quite as you were yesterday. Coming up, Citizens University, our first one was a success. We allotted about an hour, hour fifteen, um for Shelley and I to to discuss with the the citizens that signed up for that. We were there for over two hours, they had very good questions, they were very interested in what we were doing. It's a very positive experience, not only for the citizens that have come there, but I think it was really good for Shelley and I as well. It's a great group that has joined. If you have an opportunity, drop in on one of those, you'll hear from our staff and what they're doing. And um, you know, they might have questions of you as well. You have a
Police and comms.
Police and comms are next, so um I know y'all have a slotted time, right, Mayor?
Well, you were supposed to be the first one, but yes, we'll
Drop in on one, drop in on one and see what's going on. And then, of course, we have the tea time at the pool up there highlighting lots of things in between. Your next budget workshop, May twenty-ninth, nine AM. I don't remember the topic, but it's gonna be great, I'm sure. I'm gonna scoot through these um legislative priorities. We talked about Senate Bill nineteen yesterday. The mayor is waiting on a text back from Chairman Hunter as a result of that. If nobody has any heartburn, I'm gonna go ahead and write a letter to the Chair of the Committee and copy our representatives on that. Because I think it's important that we may get known what that will potentially do to our smaller cities. I think it was introduced in um the spirit of some of the larger cities, but um it hasn't been completely thought through. So that's Senate Bill nineteen. Let's see. Yep, okay, these, a lot of these are to do with property taxes, how we issue debt, um some of the things that we talked about yesterday as well. Nothing new for you there. House Bill nineteen would put all on elections in November. And then um that would allow us to move our elections to November, which, if you remember from our charter review committee, one of the things that came out of that that is the window for us to move our elections to November ever opened up, that we would do that. So there's potential that that will happen in this legislature.
The idea behind that was the cost savings for the election. We're not running a separate election, separate of everyone else in the county.
What is it, it's like thirty grand?
Thirty grand, but we'll have to watch to have the contracts written, because if they're having, you know, a certain and they've got majority of the ballot, we shouldn't have that, which is
Right. So we'll be sure that it's weighted appropriately. Um Senate, uh sorry, House Bill twenty-two, twenty-five, and Senate Bill eighteen eighty-three has to do with how we can um appropriate and have to vote for our impact fees. We're talking about that right now, so we want to keep a close eye on that. If anything negative comes out of that, I'll certainly want to be writing a letter.
Um, if anything negative comes out of that, I'll certainly wanna be writing a letter. Um. House Bill Twenty-three allows applicants to request a third-party review of development document, land improvements, et cetera. We are already doing that. If you come in and, um, you're uncomfortable with our staff or something adversarial has happened, or if you disagree, you're welcome to use a third party. We will take Bureau Veritas and State Bill, no questions asked. They're, they're tried and true. They take their review. They're professionals. It's gonna cost them a little more. It's gonna be a little quicker. So, um, we're, we're all for that. Um, doesn't, it doesn't cost us anything. In fact, it probably reduces some time. Um, so we're for that. Oh, here's the Senate Bill Twelve-O-nine, eliminate the date from election date, and then Senate Bill Fourteen-Ninety-four, use through November.
Does that, does that affect, uh, school districts as well?
It says local government, so.
Good, yeah. It said, you know, school district is typically in, in Maine as well, right?
Yeah, fourteen-ninety-four says city. Twelve-O-nine, I don't have the.
The word is.
Schools there, so, um, House Bill Fifteen-Twenty-two, I've already written a letter like this. Um, this is to change our post-game notice from seventy-two hours to three days. It sounds benign, but we struggle to get the agenda out, you know, on Friday for a Tuesday meeting. This will make it, you have to have full, full days, so we have to back the agenda. The problem with that is our paper has moved to once a week. You have to have your information in the week prior to that. We have to have fifteen days for notice. And we have a shop called for development. Um, we're already squeezed. I think this will squeeze us more, and I'm not sure that we can meet some of the shop call requirements with all the other parameters that we have. One thing I will say is now that the count, that the newspaper has moved out of the county, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. Since the newspaper has moved out of the county, we have the audit to vet the papers. So we might need to pick a paper as our official paper that, um, publishes more in line with what we need to meet all of our requirements. We'll see how this goes, and then we'll be back with something on that. It, it doesn't matter to us, you know, if it's three days or seventy-two hours, as long as all the pieces can work. Any questions? Seems to raise some controversy. Oh, I'll talk about House Bill Forty-Ninety-seven, or y'all want to go to that?
Nope.
Still have an hour and a half.
She didn't even order y'all supper. That's all I'm gonna say. This is, this is just the perfect.
I brought some snacks, guys.
Okay. House Bill Forty-Ninety-seven, um, is that our audits have to be six months in, um, or we have to be complete six months after the fiscal year, or we cannot adopt anything greater than the known new revenue rate. I mean, personally, I think this is great. You gotta have your audit done, but y'all also know that we were put in a situation where our audits got behind and we had to work really hard to catch up, so it's, I think it's a probably good bill across the board, but I also think people need to understand that there are circumstances that, um, that put you in different situations for your audits. Um, and just.
Amendment on that, the fine.
Yeah, to put a fine, it's not in there, so.
Did that or indifferent? We know both sides of that one.
On that particular house, or, uh, bill, I mean, there was, we weren't the only ones in the state of Texas that got our, uh, tax notices that, you know, the, the appraisals were that, that far delayed, so. So it would affected, it would have affected, I believe, a lot, a lot of the areas of Texas.
For one particular year, but our audit deficiencies were.
Multi-year.
Personally inflicted, so, um. There were different circumstances. It was, like I said, it was self-inflicted wound. And then we have super pre-anchion back, um, and nothing's changed there. Same thing as previous years. Okay, what else? I've got no dance. I can sing, but you wouldn't like it.
I guess technically we can recess until six-thirty.
Yes, sir.
And finish the meeting.
We've got to report, they have to report.
Drag it out.
For a whole hour and a half.
And next on the agenda would be reports from council.
Stephanie, talk it up.
Oh, yeah. Um, no, I'm just very thankful for ensuring that, um, we gave George proclamation today and honored him. Uh, his third memorial this Saturday, the twenty-sixth, at ten AM, um, so if you'd like to join anyone. Other than that, I have no other, uh, reports out. I did really appreciate hearing your information and, uh, thank you for coming out tonight. So I hope that we can do something to ensure, um, you're heard, okay?
Thank you. Ward three?
Not that tall.
Uh, let's see, I did have the ice cream, uh, social event. That was, uh, that was fun. Lasted probably hour, hour and a half or so. Uh, we had a lot of good questions and, uh, back and forth. Uh, Shelley takes great notes for y'all. I mean, she really puts it together. Uh, there was a lot of things that, uh, that we're able to answer there. Uh, between the two of us, we're able to answer, and then what we weren't able to answer, we're gonna kick out to the department heads and, and see if they can help us, uh, get some of those answers. But it was, it was good, uh, for the first one. Uh, I was excited about it. Uh, people got some, got some information they didn't previously have. So I look forward to y'all's, y'all's feedback and, and, uh, hopefully it becomes a, a little more popular event to attend. Uh, but it was great. It was great getting out there, supporting a, a local business. We were at Grandma B's. Um, great ice cream. And, uh, other than that, uh, I believe that's all I have.
All right, one more.
So I guess on this kind of event, I have the meeting.
Thank you.
Um, we have tea time with me, Vanessa, on May twenty-eighth, um, at six-thirty at the pool. Um, so I will put out notices, obviously, on social media and try to get as much participation as possible. Um. I did have the tree committee meeting last week. Um, there was, um, just a couple, uh, it was subdivision that they need to talk to. I think the biggest thing that came out of the tree committee was, I know we had talked about this during our strategic meeting yesterday, uh, just us, when people, when subdivisions, especially subdivisions in, in businesses, they take out trees, having to replant it or put into mitigation funds to replant trees. We just don't have an option right now with our drought to water these trees that we have this money for, so we need to figure out another way to, um, make that work for future. So we're not just losing our trees, and it just sits there doing absolutely nothing. So I think the, the committee right now is working on some thoughts, and we're trying to figure out the city staff as well, um, where we can go from there. I think it's just kind of a struggle right now. Um, I know we had the CVB meeting. I'm let Shelley maybe give a couple of updates on there. I unfortunately missed it due to a doctor's appointment, but, um.
I think it's, um, I was at the Zoom yet. They did discuss the new updated plan. Kimberly attended a long time, but they updated the new plan. They, um.
Postponed some of the expenses.
Yeah, they did postpone some of the expenses for clarity. Um, there were, uh, that was really about it. They went over the meetings coming up. They briefly went over some of the things that they are already working on for marketing for April, which they have done in May. Um, and that was really about it.
Okay, and they're still working on the event, like, the events are individual now. They're working with you guys still. So that's every event that comes up until we get a full task force and plan. That's how it's working.
And they are working on, um, the new website, and it's going to be, um.
It's training.
Extremely beneficial. The website will help us. But then they're also, um, working on different ways to train the public on how to put their own information in.
Okay.
We're on fourth. We'll let Shelley do a little bit of a demo when that goes to the pool, you know, maybe a five or so minutes. Um, just to show you that it's a little bit more than just a website. Um, you know, all of this CVB stuff is still a little clunky, but it's starting to coagulate, so, um, I, I would say have faith in these guys. Um, they're working hard, and the group is working hard. And I think it's gonna be, um, really productive. And who's the new person in June?
Yes, we, um, we had sent out some questionnaires to some candidates, and those have come back. We're gonna have to go through them and select some candidates to do a first round. And after that, the, the first committee will choose about three or four. And then they will go to Vanessa and Jatine, and I think Jennifer Day will help, and then select the right person.
How many applicants do you have?
Oh, I.
Was it ten or was it forty?
Um, no, it was over forty.
Good point.
I think that's it. That's all I have.
Well, um, I don't know what, but before our next meeting, we will see the executive director for the Center of Arts, for the City of Rockport Art Center, giving up his position, moving back down home to Mexico. And we will miss Luis Perron very much. He has been a very big asset for our community, especially during the hurricane. There were a lot of people did a lot of good for the City of Rockport during the hurricane. But he saved the art center, and he was a driving force in getting the new one built. And at the time, there were a lot of folks thought it was ugly and it didn't match the rest of the town, and I don't know what all else. But he kept on working anyway, and it is a very, very nice facility for our town. People really love it when they go down there. And we will miss Luis very much. He's got a very capable lady that's gonna take over for him. We will do a great job for the art center. But, uh, Luis will be missed. He's done a great job for our town. I don't have anything else. We're gonna recess till six-thirty.
Mayor, uh, the Rockport Fire Chief has showed up. I don't know if, i-if it's appropriate to go back to item sixteen that, if he has anything to say that, that we discussed, or any kind of presentation.
We got plenty of time.
Chief, you got anything that you wanted to?
My treasurer is not currently present. We just, uh, like to call the treasurer, the House State Department. He's cleaned up, trying to make it here soon. Basically, without all of my information, I have the, the gist of it.
Um, well, we do have six-thirty. We gotta be back here at six-thirty for a public.
That'll work. That'll probably be more appropriate.
Is, would, if that'd be appropriate to.
We can do it.
Sixteen, whenever he, when we're back at six-thirty. That'll work.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we wanna, we mentioned you in the department report on. Not fresh, you took a jerk, so basically, you seen us, but department wanted a report.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. Put them off the pot, huh?
Yeah, I was like, what did I, what did I say I was gonna do? Um, Mayor, so I do race to, to, to get the motion to adjourn in sometimes, and, uh, in that, uh, I have made it early too soon and, and not given these staff the opportunities to maybe give some, some things that they got going on in the upcoming weeks, and so if, if it pleases you, uh, if we could, just to have staff maybe give an update of anything they have going on that would be part of it to the council or, or city.
I've never seen that on the agenda before.
No, it'd be.
It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, I.
There's only so many things that we can.
Like last week, whenever we had the.
We're not doing anything in particular. We are recess, so if y'all would like to tell us anything, you're welcome to.
No, we're good.
And any two other good folks, we are recessed. We're sitting here wishing it was six-thirty, but if, if you're.
I do have one thing I forgot. We are hosting a class on May tenth at the Saturday for plumbing CEUs, for plumbers and plumbing inspectors, to get their CEUs for their license renewals here on May tenth.
What you got coming up, Joe?
Hey, Mayor, this is Art. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't mean to rain on y'all's parade, but if y'all are recessed, uh, we can't be having this discussion. It's, uh, except in a, in an open meeting.
Always the introduction.
We have a recess now. You don't need it.
Yeah, I said it a little while ago.
Art's just part of it. Okay, I'm recessed.
He was listening. Nobody else was.
All right, y'all go get a drink, a gin, or whatever you need.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is a regular city council meeting, City of Rockport for April the twentieth. We have been in recess until now. It is six-thirty, and we are back in regular session. Item number thirteen is the item we are considering at this time, consider conditional use permit to bring the existing RV park into compliance and add twenty-three spaces in a clubhouse on the property located at seventeen-oh-one Sixteenth Street. Ms. Dietrich.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Carrie Dietrich, Community Planner of the City of Rockport. So this property is a five-and-a-half acre RV park, but two of the acres are not developed. And they're coming for a cup to bring it into compliance with our ordinance and to develop the additional two acres. Um, it's not specific on here. I know there was a specific number on how many sites, but Mr. Cooper is here to tell you all about it when you're ready.
That being the case, we are going to go into a public hearing. It is six-thirty-one, and we are in a public hearing on this matter. Yes, sir. Gentlemen, it's gonna put, do the project.
Hi, everyone. My name's Gerard Cooper. Um, we purchased this property, seventeen-oh-one, as an investment property. It was in total disrepair, and like was stated, uh, three acres of it was developed already. There was eighteen sites that are actually functioning. There's approximately, uh, twenty-six sites that are developed but not functioning. And two acres that are not developed at all. So we bought it as an investment. We have construction backgrounds. Um, so we wanted to purchase this park, bring it up to better standards, and, uh, expand it a little bit. Basically, that's what we're applying for.
Anyone else wish to address this particular issue during the public hearing? If not, we're back in regular session. Anything else?
So there have been no, um, no responses at all for or against. Um, there was one phone call asking about specifics, but they weren't for or against.
Okay. Counsel, questions? Not, do I have a motion?
I'm able to approve item thirteen as provisioned.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Oh, a second?
I have motion and a second. Any further questions? If not, we will call for a vote. I didn't read the whole caption. Let me do that so we'll know what we're voting on. I'm surprised that Shelley didn't throw something at me. Just consider approval on first of two readings, ordinance number nineteen-seventy-one, granted additional use permit for the purpose of bringing the existing RV park into compliance and adding twenty-three spaces and a clubhouse on the property located at seventeen-oh-one Sixteenth Street, also known as Lot Eighty-One, Block Two-Fifty. Swickheimer, five-point-five-five acres, City of Rockport, Ranges County, Texas. Subject to compliance with the conditions stated within the ordinance, as well as those stipulated with the City of Rockport Code of Ordinances, repelling all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Again, I have a motion and a second. Are there other questions? If not, we'll call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Next item on the agenda, consider a request to change zoning on land from R-one for property located at seventeen-eleven through seventeen-fifteen Sixteenth Street. Ms. Dietrich.
Good evening. This is a property at, um, seventeen-eleven Sixteenth Street, some four hundred and bypassing sixty. And they are asking to rezone to one, to build a about eight thousand square foot building for commercial use. Um, TMZ recommended approval, and we've gotten a road project.
Okay. We will conduct a public hearing on this particular matter. Is there anyone that's gonna do the project here?
Yes.
Okay, good. Uh, we're conducting a public hearing. Uh, we're conducting a public hearing. It is six thirty-four and we are in a public hearing. Go right ahead, sir.
Good evening. I'm the owner of that property, seventeen eleven to seventeen fifteen on sixteenth street and the bypass. It's currently zoned as R one. I would like to, or requesting to rezone to commercial. So I can provide that building with some negotiations that I have going on with other companies.
Okay. Anyone else here want to address this particular issue? If not, I will declare the public hearing closed. It is six thirty-five. Ms. Dietrich?
Do you have any other questions for me?
Anything else, counsel? Questions? If not-
Move to approve item fourteen.
I have a motion and a second.
Sorry. You gotta read the ordinance first.
Yeah, I did that a little while ago and you didn't throw anything at me. Okay. I'm not used to these recesses. It's, okay, the caption, consider approval on first of two readings of ordinance nineteen seventy-one, meaning the official zoning map is stipulated under Article four point one of City of Rockport Zoning Ordinance, number ten twenty-seven. By changing the zoning of land from R one for single family dwelling district, property located at seventeen eleven through seventeen fifteen sixteenth street, also known as west part of Lot eighty-three and E two of Lot eighty-four, Block two fifty Swickheimer subdivision to B one general business district, feeling all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability and providing an effective date. Okay. Any questions, counsel?
Makes perfect sense to me to have business located on the bypass. So with that said, I move to approve item fourteen as presented.
Close second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further question? If not, we'll call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Takes care of those pieces of business. We are going to go back to item number sixteen that was put on the agenda by Councilman Brian Dret regarding funding for the fire department. Fire chief is here and we're gonna hear from him.
We have to make a motion.
Make a motion to revisit item sixteen.
No, second.
Okay, then no need to vote on it. Any other questions? Ward one.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. I think we had to vote to go back to one. Okay.
Thanks, Shelley.
She's keeping you legal.
Sorry.
She's keeping you legal.
I guess. Go right ahead, chief.
Go ahead. We're looking at the treasurer.
Okay.
Can you see the presentation on the air on TV?
Yes, sir.
My name's Mark Thompson. I'm the treasurer of the Rockport Volunteer Fire Department since January of this year. So a whopping four months on the job. Just have a couple of slides. I'll be brief. Please ask any questions along the way. This provides just a couple of statistics of the fire department overall at a glance. The calls, as you can see, have almost doubled over the past six years. In twenty eighteen, we had around four hundred calls per year. And in last year, we had somewhere in the neighborhood of seven hundred and sixty calls. So definitely, it's gotten busier as, as the, as the city has grown. The also difficult part here is the repair and maintenance costs have increased about a hundred and forty percent over the past four years. That's what's been taxing our finances. And this is specifically the apparatus that we use to fight fires. We have an aging fleet. I'll go through that briefly. But as things get older and they break, it's just been more and more expensive to fix these things. And then finally, volunteerism in the community is flagging these days. There just doesn't seem to be as many people wanting to volunteer in the department maybe as in the, the good old days. So we're trying to combat that with flyers and promotions and these types of things. And we're gonna see how, how that goes. From a financial perspective, we had, we set some goals at the beginning of the year. We're, we're wanting to increase our unrestricted income by about two hundred thousand dollars. I'll get more into that in a, in a minute, but that's, that's been one of our top goals. Obviously recruit and retain new members and we, I mentioned some of the things we're, we're doing about that. Reduce repair and maintenance costs by twenty-five percent. We are taking a couple of steps to do that as well, specifically by buying a couple of new fire engines to replace the, the two oldest engines. I'll show some numbers on that. And then there's the, the, the big thing there, acquire funding for a new tower truck. Our tower truck is, we do have one, but it's pretty old and it's showing signs of war and terror. And eventually, we're gonna have to replace that. So that's a very expensive item. Obviously, there's a two million dollar price tag. That's approximate, but it's, it's a big deal. This just covers briefly the age of our fleet and we don't have to go into all the details. There, there's a brush truck there that's fifty-five or something years old. But in general, the average age of the fleet is around twenty years old, which is pretty old. NFPA recommends that the frontline pumpers be replaced after fifteen years. And a lot of our pumpers are at or, or over that. Now, the two oldest pumpers, you can see at the bottom, we put down payments on two new engines to replace our two oldest engines. So that's something that we've been able to save up our capital restricted funds far over the course of many years and are finally able to pull the trigger on that to, to, to get two engines to replace our two oldest ones. That's one of the ways we're hoping to reduce our repair and maintenance costs a little bit and try and hit that goal of, of getting that down a little bit. I don't need to go into a ton of details here. I know there was some, there's been discussion about this and a lot of people know if you're, paid departments cost a lot of money. We have a volunteer department. Volunteer departments are much cheaper. And you can see the price ranges there. I mean, we're kind of at the low end of the volunteer department budget range. We're a little under six hundred thousand dollars. I'll show you that on the next page. Combination of paid departments are anywhere from two million to six million a year is what they cost. And they, they get that obviously through taxes. So, you know, it's a good deal to have a volunteer department. Particularly, if you compare us on the left there, you can see there's some stats about Aranz's past. They're about a one point seven million dollar a year budget. And from a capability perspective, the ratings, the ISO ratings are very similar. There's, we're, they're four versus our four Y. The reason the Y is there is the city, in the City of Rockport, has fewer fire agents than Aranz's past. That's just, is what it is. But the four indicates the capability of the fire department and we're equal. So we're providing equal service of a paid department as a volunteer department here at Rockport. So bottom line, it's a, it's a, it's a good deal. And that's what we'd like to keep going. This is our budget, just a very top level view of our budget for the year. We've broken this out into two columns. I think many of you are familiar with the fact that we have restricted funds that we get from the city and the county. And that we have to use for capital purchases. New apparatus, new gear, these types of things. And you can see that, that the apparatus expense there, one point two nine three million, those are the two new fire engines that we have put down payments on and that are, will be replacing our two oldest engines. So that's the total projected expense that we have for the year. And we'll have about, somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars left in our capital account. And then starting from here, we'll start to rebuild that up over the years to eventually be able to afford another engine or pumper or tanker or whatever it is that we deem is at the top of the list. On the unrestricted side, on the left there, we're projected to have around three hundred thousand dollars of unrestricted income this year. And that's, that includes operations money from the city and county. It also includes all of our donations and grants and everything else that we can, that we can get. And so we have the projected income there and then the, the two main expenses below it, operations expense and repair maintenance expense. And that's what we're projecting this year. Again, this is the budget. And you can see that our total unrestricted expenses is projected to be around a little over four hundred thousand. With a little over three hundred thousand income, that puts us in a hundred thousand dollar deficit for the year with an ending balance of our unrestricted funds projected to be around a hundred thousand dollars. So if we're, and the fact is, this is one of the first things I looked at when I got in this position. For the past four years, I'll just switch to that real quick. For the past four years, the unrestricted fund balance in the department has been going down about a hundred thousand dollars a year. Last year, it didn't go down quite as much. There were some one-time grants that we were able to get that, that softened that blow. But you can see the progression of the, of the balance there, of the unrestricted funds balance. It's, it's definitely a, a trend. And clearly, that, that has an endpoint when it, when it reaches zero. We don't want, we don't want that to happen. So, uh, the back button doesn't appear to work on this. Is it, can you flip back for me just a couple of slides? One more, one more. There we go. That, that's fine, thank you. So, uh, any questions about the budget? That's, that's what we're, that's reality. That's what we're facing. And so we're obviously doing everything we can to try and continue to raise funds. But this is the, one of the fundamental problems of, that we, that we face.
Sorry, do your vehicles require like an annual inspection and certification?
Yes, absolutely.
And so even if it's required to be, or the, the recommended end of life is twenty years, at twenty-one, you're still inspected and certified? You can still use, continue to use that truck?
We can, but at the, at the expense of maintenance and repairs, that's just like anybody else.
But there's, there's an overarching agency that may come in at some point and take that vehicle out of use because you do not need the, the required-
There is not anyone that's gonna come force us to take an engine out of service. The only thing that's gonna take us out, take that engine out of service is the budget, allowing us to keep up with the repairs and maintenance.
Okay.
So at some point, the, the, the cost of maintaining that vehicle or keeping it running outweighs the income that we have.
I understand the premise. I just didn't know if there was an overarching agency that would say your vehicle is not fit for, for use.
They have, they'd have to do an annual pump test.
Right.
If the pump fails the test, then they have to repair it or remove it. Yeah.
Thank you.
From service. But if the, if the cost, cost associated with repairing a pump-
We face the same thing.
Yeah.
There's a balance. I just didn't know if there was a regulatory agency that would force that. So anyway, that ends our question.
It's, it's an annual pump test and then, then post-testing and all that other stuff goes along with it, but it's not actually tied to the apparatus and so.
We have to make so many tests in so many fields to meet compliance. And at some point, the trucks, a lot of the trucks, when they get to be twenty-five, thirty years old, just can't meet the, the pump tests and, and the constraints that govern us.
Okay. Thank you.
This just summarizes where we spend our money. You know, it's repairing and or replacing the fleet. PPE, the personal protective equipment for the, for the members, which we have to have. That was, that was reminded to us recently in the fire, the big brush fires. As we, we didn't have that stuff, we'd be crispy critters. So it's good that we have gear. Operational running calls, every call we run uses diesel, uses, uses, puts wear and tear on the apparatus and gear and everything else. And then, well, of course fundraising, it takes a little money to, to, to make money. We have to buy food for, we sell at Oyster Fest and these types of things. So those are all the areas where we, where we spend the budget. In summary, we're looking to try and increase our unrestricted income by about two hundred thousand dollars per year, specifically to fund the operations, replace aging gear and equipment and begin to support the growth that we're, they were seeing. You saw the, the call volume growth and that's projected. I mean, I mean, we're looking at that continuing to go up. Things aren't, population isn't shrinking, it's, it's growing. So we expect those calls to continue to increase and we have to be able to support that. And then, of course, the issue of towers is a separate issue of how do we protect the, the, the new multi-story buildings going in with a, with an updated tower? Are there any questions about this data or anything I can answer?
When you have an event like the fire we had the other day that we all know about, can you break down from, from our department, from the Rockport Volunteer Fire Department, what the cost of that particular event was for y'all?
We could take a stab at that. Do you have any numbers up?
Pretty, pretty, pretty close. Like the last event, we could, with a couple hours of sitting around with a few folks, we could give you a cost of what something like that actually costs as far as everything except for manpower. We could estimate what the manpower was, but we know exactly how many trucks, how many hours, how many men, women, how much merchandise was moved. We, we, we keep track of every item that goes in and out of the fire scene on that scale.
Yeah. I think something like that would be real beneficial to us when we're dealing with the public, trying to make them understand what the, what the situation is. I think there are so many people moving here, they're not used to paying extra for a fire department because they've been paying taxes and it's been paying for it. And I don't think that that encourages people to go ahead and add another three dollars a month to their water bill. I, I, I'm not convinced. It's just not a practice. It's not anything we do and they don't think about it. And they expect y'all to be there, which you have been for thirty-five years, I'm aware of. But sometime, we're gonna have to make somebody understand what the cost is and how y'all get by on what you're getting and that you can't do it anymore. And we're gonna have to convince people that somehow. And those kind of numbers will be a real big benefit to us at some point. I mean, there's no rush on it, but we're gonna be doing budget and we're gonna be talking to the public about things that we have concerns about and this will be a big one.
The average, the average runs around seven hundred fifty to a thousand dollars. So if you take the total number of expense versus the total number of calls and you put them in, it's between seven fifty and a thousand. So if we go to a fire alarm, of course, that's not gonna cost a thousand dollars. But when you go to these big events, you're talking forty, fifty thousand dollars. But that is also shared amongst all of the communities that we ask to come help us. And in return, we do the same for them.
Sure. Okay. And the number of man-hours, I mean, I'm sure y'all probably have that somewhere, but that kind of thing will be important for us to know.
So specifically, you're, you're asking for that for the fires that we had last week?
Yeah, it, it would be, that is a fire everybody knows about.
Yep, okay.
And so I don't have to tell them, y'all remember, they'll remember.
We can put that together. We can put that together.
I think it'd be good also, while we're working on budget, if, you know, those, those numbers, if we can present those numbers, if those numbers are public, we can put that out there and maybe it'll entice some more monetary donations or monetary benefits to y'all.
That is just a synopsis of our budget. Our budget is very detailed.
No.
We, we don't necessarily want to shout out to everybody, but we, it's more than excessive.
Well, I think for, for all, we don't need to get into the weeds on this budget, you, you know. But, you know, the, the thirty thousand foot view of it is, is good enough for me to know that we're not funding y'all to levels, or you're not being funded at the level that it may be needed to, to, to continue to operate the department.
And that's what we wanna do. We wanna operate at a high standard as a volunteer department, a flagship of South Texas that provides a service comparable to paid departments at a fraction of the cost.
I will make a comment on your ISO rating. Four is really, really good for a, for a volunteer department. I mean, there's, there's, there's career departments that are rated lower, higher numerically, lower in the rating. So that's, that's a pretty good, it's a very good rating, considering, considering there's no paid staff. I, ISO is insurance service, oh, what's the, oh, office?
Okay, my line, I was on the phone with the mayor, I was gonna have a meeting.
Well, it's, it's, it's what we, so all of our insurance that we pay for our property insurance is based on a fire department, part of it's based on the fire department's ISO rating. The lower numerically rating, a one, two, three, four, is a really good department. The higher it gets, the, the more you're gonna pay for property insurance. So that's, that's one thing that we have to consider is we have a, a volunteer fire department with a rating, rating ranking of four, which is pretty, pretty dang good for us. So commend y'all on that.
Are people also saying that that rating will affect the insurances of our, our residents?
It's, yes.
Probably not one hundred percent.
Yeah, if, if, and when ISO comes and does a study, they come and they see that you can, it's usually every ten years, you can request to have one done if you use something, if you get new trucks, new stations, new, something like that, you can have them come and, and do another rate study for you. And hopefully, hopefully you go down and get a better rating. But it's all, it's stations, response times, training hours.
Public education.
Public education, fire, fire hydrants.
Information alone, the public-
And that's coming. We're, we have a meeting planned for September to start. We're trying to reevaluate the ISO and see if there's a potential to get it to a three.
Equipment, it, it's equipment on your trucks, your ladder truck, your, our tower. All, all sorts of things go to that ISO.
Application.
Yeah, and it really helps our insurance costs as, as a taxpayer and as a, so a homeowner, whatever business owner. It, it decreases the amount of money you write to the insurance. So y'all are to be committed on, on a four, that's, that's great. Really good.
I, I just wanna add that Carrie also works very hard to keep the city's ISO rating at four.
It, it, it's a group effort. I mean, it's a-
I just, oh, we have a piece of that too.
Yeah.
I just wanted you to know. They're doing their part. We're trying to do our part, but-
One, one question, Chief, is, are y'all, do y'all follow NFPA guidelines for-
Strictly.
Strictly?
To the best of our ability, as, as much as our finances will allow us to. We do all of our firefighters, we're actually in a, a push right now to make sure that all of our firefighters in the department are firefighter one and that all of our gears, NFPA seventy-one. And we go through everything that we can do. we go through everything that we can do. We replace every set of gear, ten years max, it goes out the door, and that's something most people don't realize. We buy a set of gear that's seventy-five hundred dollars per firefighter, and ten years, no matter what condition it is and how well we take care of it, you have to take it for a...
You've got to get thrown away.
And air packs. Everything has a compliance, and the trucks aren't the bad part. It's the thirty thousand dollars with the air packs you have to buy every couple of years. You know, Sergeant Fifty-Seven, this year, I'm here, or Sergeant Captain, you can have a bonus.
He spent fifty-six thousand just in gear with an extra about seventeen hundred in repairs for all of the gear that we have the last week.
That's just gear. That's just what you're doing.
Yep. And almost every fire you go to, you're going to damage something.
We are NFPA compliant to the best of our ability.
Well, I was going to say that adds a monetary factor in there when you're replacing gear at end of life for NFPA.
And that's directly correlated to ISO as well.
I guess it comes down to, like, I'm listening, I always have, like, we all are all agreeing seriously on this. But anytime, anything we can do to support you guys, that's, we're going to do that a hundred percent. I think on our side of it, like I said, I think we had some good ideas, but the PR, just listening to what you guys have to say, that makes the biggest income, I think, as a resident. If I'm going to give out money, I think that maybe that message is not being reached out easily until there is a fire. Like, I know you guys are all over, you know, everywhere after this fire, but that message still needs to be relayed quite often and, you know, continuously. And that's not just happening on you. If there's something, us, like, we do our town halls, and we do our, you know, meet and greets and all that stuff. There's stuff that we can do to, like, have you guys come out and have these, like, little, not like a whole presentation, but your little tidbits, like, this is how much it's going to cost. If you guys are spending three dollars on your water bill, this is what difference it's going to make on your volunteer volunteer department. And hearing from you guys, it's going to make a much bigger difference than it carries it from us, because you're the ones out there doing the actual work and doing, you know, making the difference out there. We can sit there all day, and we're not, I mean, except for Brad, I can say, because he didn't do that, but I mean, we don't know the actual ins and outs of it. We can hear the numbers all day long, but you guys are going to make that impact on the people. So we can, just to you guys, it's like to think about, like, having, like, videos, even them talking, having, hey, this is three dollars on our water bill, or even if you want to raise it to five dollars. I mean, eventually, if I give you all the money if you could, because I've paid five dollars versus the double my tax bill. I mean, that's not something I would want to do.
It's your choice.
But I mean, just to have that difference out there and having you guys speak on it, I think that would make a big difference on residents here, that, look on it. And opting out, too, I think we definitely have to change that, because opting in, people, I mean, that extra second, people, we're all in a rusty face. So I mean, taking that extra second to do that, if you have the option to opt out, they're more likely not to opt out than to have to check the box to opt in. I think there's ideas out there. I know you guys had a few things you're looking at, too, but we're all here to support you. So anything we can do, I think we have, we can come up with some good ideas to start, get you guys going here, help y'all, so.
I don't know if there's anything we can do to drastically affect the 2025 budget, but working through our budget, budget process coming up, we'll definitely look, try to look at some things on our end that we can do to help, whatever that may be, however creative we can get, without a substantial tax increase to the...
Well, there's a couple ways we could do it. We could get the retired firefighter to put his gear back on the competition.
My back hurts.
Just having you at the command post was excellent.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me come out and play. I'll do my part to try to help from the city's standpoint in our budget, see what we can do, and continue to do that, because we are getting a heck of a deal.
I do know that you're appreciative very much.
Extremely.
Thank you.
We have your back. We're here. We'll keep looking out for you guys.
All right, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Also, to your own accord, though...
We are. We feel like we are. To the best of our capabilities.
And every time we have a conference, I mean, there's a lot of different places where you can go to spread the information, but there's only so many places we go, and that's typically homework in the fire station. So we do our best to go to public events and spread the word, but there's only so much of us to go around.
I will say, just on my point, that I've, in the past week, I've been visiting businesses in town, soliciting potential donations for rapid purchases and these types of things. And I am seeing actually a little bit of fatigue from some of the business owners of, you know, shoot guys again, you know, firefighters are always asking for money. I've actually heard that, and that actually surprised me a little bit, but, you know, I mean, I get it when you're a small business owner, you're struggling to make it work, and then this people keep coming in and asking for money. It's tough. And so that's why we're focused on systemic funding as opposed to just donations. We can increase donations, too, but I don't think that's the whole solution.
Maintain motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second motion. It is seven PM. We are adjourned.